We'll open the meeting with a moment of silence. And we're all here for a swearing in ceremony. And I'm going to turn the microphone over. He has a microphone. I'll figuratively turn the microphone over to the chief. And we'll do a couple of swearing in ceremonies here. And then we will go upstairs for a meeting. You all don't have to come. You can stay here and have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight, TA, ATA, select board, honored friends, guests, representatives as well. Tonight we have swearing in two new offices for the town of Whitman by Fire Rescue. At this time, I'd like to ask Patrick Travers to come forward. Smile. Too nice. All right, cool. Patrick is a Whitman resident. He is joined by his family, friends. Patrick is joined by his wife, Megan, daughter Samantha, son Nathan, and the rest of his family, as we know most of them. Patrick was appointed a firefighter paramedic April 3, 2006. He was officially appointed lieutenant paramedic October 22, 2024, filling the vacancies due to a promotion. Patrick's family has been a staple of Whitman for a long time, specifically public safety. His grandfather, John, was the police chief. His father was a well-known, longtime fire chief of Whitman Fire Rescue. And his sister Kelly is a Massachusetts State Trooper. So this family is dedicated their life to public service. And should be very admirable in that. It's safe to say Patrick grew up in Whitman Fire. And one thing to say about Patrick is he has a true passion for the fire service, whether it's through taking photos, taking advantage of educational opportunities, or getting training certificates. He's always taken advantage of it. Patrick holds an associate's degree in fire science and has continued on and will be graduating with a bachelor's degree in the near future. So it is safe to say that Patrick is a legacy at Whitman Fire. So I'll keep this short and sweet. I would like to officially announce to the board, the TA, the ATA, family, friends, guests, members of Whitman Fire Rescue, local 1769, Lieutenant Patrick Travers. At this time, the town clerk will officially swear Patrick in.
So they can jam it because I don't have a loud voice. Ready? Raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Patrick T. Travers.
I, Patrick T. Travers.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
I promise to bring to my profession.
I promise to bring to my profession.
A standard of quality and integrity.
A standard of quality and integrity.
So that the conduct of my affairs of my office.
So that the conduct of the affairs of my office.
Shall be above reproach.
Shall be above reproach.
And merit public confidence.
And merit public confidence.
In the position of lieutenant paramedic on the Whitman Fire Department.
In the position of lieutenant paramedic in the Whitman Fire Department.
Perfect. I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
To which the office of lieutenant paramedic may be subject.
To which the office of lieutenant paramedic may be subject.
I, Patrick T. Travers.
I, Patrick T. Travers.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will perform the duties incumbent upon me.
That I will perform the duties incumbent upon me.
Perfect. As lieutenant paramedic for the town of Whitman.
As lieutenant paramedic for the town of Whitman.
In good faith.
In good faith.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Patrick is going to be pinned by his wife, Megan. I was informed of this earlier today. He will be being pinned with the badge of his father wore when his father was lieutenant. And that, to me, is just fantastic. Nicholas. Come on up. Much like Patrick, Nicholas is joined tonight by family and friends, his wife, Jenny, his daughter Sophie, and his son Leo, and the rest of their family in attendance this evening. Nick was a lifelong resident of Whitman. Nick now currently resides in Hanson. But Nick has been a longtime member of the department. He's been appointed September 7, 2004. He was appointed lieutenant paramedic July 7, 2019, and officially appointed deputy fire chief October 21, 2022. Nick held several positions while he's been at Whitman Fire, including the IT position and also spent time as a training officer, which he did an outstanding job at. Nicholas has an associate's degree in fire science and also holds numerous training certificates and takes every advantage of training that he can. Nicholas has already proven himself in the new position. He hit the ground running and was off and is doing a fantastic job. I wanted to have him as part of the command staff and to be able to work into the future with Nick, as well as Pat, and lead the department into the future. So to the board, TA, friends, family, honored guests, I would like to officially announce Deputy Chief Nicholas Grasso.
If you'd like to raise your hand, please. I, Nicholas A. Grasso.
I, Nicholas A. Grasso.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The laws, sorry, the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
And the bylaws of the town of Whitman.
I promise to bring to my profession a standard of quality.
I promise to bring to my profession a standard of quality.
And integrity.
Integrity.
So that the conduct of my affairs of the office.
So that the conduct of my affairs of the office.
Shall be above reproach.
Shall be above reproach.
And merit public confidence.
And merit public confidence.
In the position of deputy chief on the Whitman Fire Department.
In the position of deputy chief on the Whitman Fire Department.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
I promise to uphold such laws and bylaws.
To which the office of deputy chief may be subject.
To which the deputy chief may be subject.
I, Nicholas A. Grasso.
I, Nicholas A. Grasso.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will perform the duties incumbent upon me.
Perform the duties incumbent upon me.
As deputy chief.
As deputy chief.
For the town of Whitman.
For the town of Whitman.
In good faith.
In good faith.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Nicholas is going to be pinned by his daughter Sophie. Hold on, you can come up back. Can you come back up, please? At this time, Senator Brady, M. Catherine from Representative Sullivan's office will be coming up to present a proclamation to both members. Does he come?
You got to listen to my mouth.
All right, I'm going to try to make this quick and painless because you don't want to hear politicians speak. I totally get it. That being said, as somebody who has grown up in Whitman and my grandmother living down the street, I just want to thank you guys both for your service because you keep the well-being of our town. And I just think, you know, I'm honored to be able to present these tonight. I'm sorry Allison won't be able to be here, but I'm glad that I am. I will do this. So Deputy Chief Nicholas Grasso, in recognition of achieving the honorable rank of deputy chief of the Whitman Fire Department, it's signed by the Speaker of the House and Mayor Speaker Representative Allison Sullivan. Congratulations. And then Lieutenant Patrick Travers for achieving the honorable rank of lieutenant of the Whitman Fire Department, again, signed by the Speaker of the House and Mayor Speaker Representative Allison Sullivan.
Thank you.
Thank you. As mentioned, Rep. Sullivan, I did speak to her on the phone. She couldn't make it, but she does send her congratulations to both gentlemen. And thank you to the select board for inviting us tonight. Congratulations to all the friends and families who were able to attend, especially the Whitman Fire Department for what you do every day, saving lives. So this first one is official citation. Being known as master of the Senate, hereby extends its congratulations to Deputy Chief Nicholas Grasso in recognition of your swearing in ceremony as a member of the Whitman Fire Department and your commitment to serving the community of Whitman with dedication, integrity, and courage. This is signed by the Senate President, Karen Spohr, the clerk, Mike Curley, and myself, Mike Brady. Congratulations, Deputy Chief. And the same to Lieutenant Patrick Travers in recognition of your swearing in ceremony as a member of the Whitman Fire Department and your commitment to serving the community of Whitman with dedication, integrity, and courage. And this is also signed by the Senate President, Karen Spohr, the clerk, Mike Curley, and myself, Mike Brady. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Sure. And I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and don't eat too much turkey like me on Thursday.
That concludes the official ceremony. You can stand and take pictures for as long as you want. Thank you.
I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded and televised by WHOHCA and asks for an approval of bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Motion to accept correspondence in the read file?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
A public forum. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Okay. We have a couple of scheduled hearings at 7:05. We have the public hearing about determining the residential factor to be applied in calculating the tax levy. And it's, we've got 10 minutes to go, or almost 15 minutes to go for that. And then at 7:15, we have a hearing about a dog complaint. So why don't we try to get some business finished now, if we can?
Good idea.
Under new business, act on a comprehensive emergency management plan. We're going to put that off until a later meeting. There's some work that needs to be done on the document. And we'll probably either do that the last meeting in December or the first meeting in January. But once the document is ready, we'll do it then. Chief Hanlon, request for a conditional offers of employment? Chief, you're on.
Good evening, select board. We are in the next stages of hiring for the Whitman Police Department. We've conducted background investigations. They've submitted applications and done interviews. So at this point in the civil service list of possible candidates, looks like candidate number one and number two are in good shape to be, come to have their conditional offer of employment, if you so agree. And that would be Aiden Cafferty is in the number one position and Derek McCartney is in the number two spot. We went through five candidates. They're all outstanding as far as the process thus far. And moving forward, they're conditional offers of employment because they still have to complete the rest of the hurdles, which would be medical, psychological, PATs, and getting through a police academy.
Okay, is there a, is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion. Very good.
A second.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor of allowing the chief to continue with the process?
All right.
Aye.
Act on the request of Whitman's 150th Anniversary Committee for the following. A one-day liquor license on Saturday, April 5, 2025, for a dinner being held at the Cardinal Spelman Center and to waive the fee for said permit. Permission to use the Town Hall Auditorium on Saturday, May 3, 2025, for a talent show. Permission to use Memorial Field on Saturday, June 14, for an evening concert, followed by a fireworks display. Is there a motion?
So moved. Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. or Mrs. Rosen is right on time. We're about to act on the request of the 150th Committee.
Thank you very much.
Do you have anything that you want to say?
I don't remember what the request was.
And you don't have to say anything. So one-day liquor license on the April 5.
April 5, the Cardinal.
Cardinal Spelman Center. And there's permission to use the Town Hall on Saturday, May 3, for a talent show and permission to use Memorial Field on June 14 for an evening concert with a fireworks display. It's been moved and seconded, I think, hasn't it?
Yes.
Do you have anything you want to add?
There may be more in the future.
What? Okay.
Maybe more. Don't make any plans for April 5.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, all those in favor of?
Aye.
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 Okay. Good, good job, Rich.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is to act to appoint Rosemary Hill to the Capitol Committee, School Committee Representative, for the remainder of a three-year term through June 30, 2027, in order to fill an existing vacancy. We've been asked by the, by the school, by Jeff Simonac.
That's correct.
Correct?
Yes.
By Jeff Simonac to do so. Is there, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Okay, we can report that the motion was denied.
Okay.
So the school, the, you can let Jeff know that they'll need to send some other.
I will let him know tomorrow. Yes.
Mr. Evans, regional agreement update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's been a while since we've presented an update from the Regional Agreement Committee. Couple of things have changed, really two reminders for what we've negotiated up to this point. So I think the four biggest areas of proposed change in the regional agreement are, I'll just go through the two that we've already discussed, is a two-thirds vote for all finance-related items. And then the, I think it is the, what was it? The MARS, the Mass Association of Regional Schools, suggested a couple of specific items to be in that two-thirds group. That was votes to amend the regional agreement, votes to incur debt for capital expenses, votes to establish or terminate employment with a superintendent, votes to configure, reconfigure grades within buildings, votes to close a school, votes to lease or renew leases for land and buildings for educational purposes, votes to file suit appeal decisions or settle claims in excess of $10,000, and votes to accept a municipal gift for education purposes. This was one of the items brought by a former select board member in Hanson, Jim Hickey, who had wanted to raise the threshold for financial items. We eventually whittled it down to just these items as requiring a two-thirds vote. That we'd already discussed. I think the regional agreement amendment committee is in agreement on, on all those. The other previously negotiated item is leases of buildings. And this is kind of a weird thing that came up because of the middle school. So DESI, the state authority governing school districts, requires leases of no more than 20 years to be in the regional agreement. And MSBA requires leases of at least 50 years to fund a regional school project. So there's an obvious conflict there. The committee has been working with MARS to try to find a middle ground there. So it would be a, you know, a lease not to exceed 20 years. However, the committee intends to comply with all requirements of the MSBA if they're awarded grant money for something like that. So they're trying to thread the needle there. Seems non-controversial. The two items I would like feedback on from, from this board is the transportation assessment. This is something that the finance committee's been pushing for a couple of years. The transportation assessment as it exists right now is that each town pays their own share of non-mandated busing. And then the district assesses the cost of mandated busing back out to the towns. Manded busing is reimbursed at a certain percentage every year. Non-mandated busing is not. So that's the way it's currently handled. However, the way that it's currently handled disadvantages Whitman using both formulas. We have a much higher share of non-mandated busing, so we're paying our, our due cost of that. And we have a much lower share of mandated busing, and we're paying 60% of the cost of that. So in both instances, we are paying more than if we had just picked one of the two formulas. The proposal hasn't been voted by the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, but has been asked to seek feedback on, is to put everything under the assessed.
Assessed.
Yeah. Treat everything as an assessed cost. So the school committee will decide whether or not to fund mandated busing. It will be in their budget and it will assess both towns. There's a couple of things. One, it would shift the cost of busing to Hanson a little bit to pay their, you know, their share of, they're a much larger town, so the actual cost to bus their students, even though there's fewer students, is higher. So it would shift that a little bit. That's where it might be controversial for the Hanson members of the committee. I don't know how that's going to go. However, what it also does is it puts the incentive to reduce the costs of busing back on the district because now it is one of their operating costs that they account for every year. And if they can save money there, they can use it elsewhere in their budget. So I think that's the benefit of doing it. And, you know, for Whitman, it would save us some money because we're paying more using both formulas than if we had just picked one or the other. So there's, there's that. And then the last is a proposal from the superintendent and assistant superintendent to treat capital costs a little bit more like South Shore VOTEC. So they would build up a capital account and pay it over, you know, as needs come up, manage their own capital plan, and not necessarily come to Whitman or Hanson's capital committees, not necessarily present separate articles to town meetings for funding in the individual schools. That did not receive as great feedback from myself, Mary Beth, and the Hanson members of the committee. We enjoy having a say on town meeting floor of where the money goes. And there's a little bit of a concern on my end for if we build a pot of money, Whitman funds 60% of it, Hanson funds 40% of it, and then a Hanson roof goes. And then the money just goes out of the shared pot, treating the district as one unit rather than Hanson schools, Whitman schools, which is the way it's structured right now. So welcome any feedback on that. And my recommendation would be to support the transportation change and not to support the capital change. I don't know if anyone feels differently.
Yeah, Sean.
I support both. I think the transportation, although it might be a little bit controversial, I think it's a much cleaner way to assess both towns, and I think it is ultimately more fair. So it might be a difficult negotiation, but I do think it's the right thing to do in the negotiation.
Yeah. When you say you support both, do you mean you support?
Both of what he recommends.
Both of my recommendations. Yeah. Okay. Not both amendments, sorry.
I, I agree with Sean. I would recommend to go along with what Justin has.
Yeah. On the busing, the reason that we have a lot more non-mandated busing is because we have sidewalks. Hanson does not.
We also live in much, like, our students live much closer to the schools than Hanson.
Right. So that's why. So I agree with the transportation. I also agree to not recommend the capital because it's South Shore VOTEC. If at the end of the year, we have X amount of money left over, like we buy equipment, we put some in the capital fund, and we return some money to the towns, like we reserve, we return $31,000 from our budget when we save some money, one way or another. So I think the budget to put, start putting money into capital and you start looking at what you want to get done for your capital projects, they may turn around and say, okay, we want to put $20,000 into the capital fund this year. What happens is they, they charge the towns. Comes into our budget. And I don't agree with that.
So to, to make the district's argument for them, it would be easier to manage rather than, you know, Hanson funds their capital projects in the fall, Whitman funds theirs in the spring. Costs of things change during that time period. It gets difficult for them. However, yeah, you then, I, I think that issue alone would have trouble passing both town meetings and could threaten the entire agreement.
Right.
And I don't think it's worth, you know, when they could, I think right now they could take E and D every year and set it aside in some sort of capital fund or would be willing to establish a capital fund for them to put E and D in every year.
And in the agreement, what do you have for the assessment? You go on, state.
Yeah, the only, only formula in there is the statutory formula, the state assessment.
So I agree with your theory about both sides.
You have direction.
I've got direction. Thank you. Did I use enough time?
Do you want to do any? Yeah, it was good. Do you want to? Well, we only have a minute left. Do you have a quick town administrator's report or?
Special town meeting is next Monday evening at 7:00 PM. So that's a little different change in the time. Normally it's 7:30, it's 7:00 PM. There are only four articles. It should be a short meeting. However, we do need to make a quorum of 100, so we do encourage attendance. And the main article, the reason for the special town meeting, started with Article 4, which is the South Shore VOTEC Regional Agreement Amendment. And that amendment is very important because it does change the way towns are apportioned the debt. It will be a rolling four-year average instead of just where the town's enrollment is when the project is approved for the life of the debt. So it's very important. It does affect future debt, and so I just encourage participant, attendance.
Thank you. It has reached 7:05, so it's time for our public hearing for the purpose of determining a residential factor to be applied in calculating the percentages of the tax levy to be borne by each class of real estate and personal property for fiscal year 2025. You're on.
All right, great. My name is Wendy Jones. I'm the principal assessor for the town of Whitman. I just want to acknowledge a board member, John Noska, in the audience here. So I'll make this quick because I know it's important for setting the tax rate for fiscal So the focus is to determine and adopt the percentages of the tax levy applied to each of the property classes. These percentages require a vote on the minimum residential factor to either adopt a single rate, which is the residential factor of one, or a multiple rate, percentage up to 1.5 available under the property tax classification. The select board votes to determine whether there is a shift in the percentage of the tax levy from the residential class to the commercial and industrial property classes. So here we have our levy for 2025. The total amount to be raised that's voted at town meeting, $52 million and change, minus the total estimated receipts. That includes motor vehicle excise, fees, licenses, permits, et cetera. So $17 million is taken out of that, and we're left with an estimated tax levy to be raised by property taxes of $34 million, close to, oh, close to $35 million. So in case anybody doesn't know what property classes are, we have residential, commercial, industrial, personal property. They are considered classes by Department of Revenue. So residential is improved property with one or more occupied living units, including accessory land and buildings, garages, sheds, pools, et cetera. Commercial, improved and vacant land used for the purpose of conducting business, such as stores, restaurants, gas stations, office buildings. This includes chapter land classification, which is a reduction in your land value for keeping open space for farming, forestry, golfing, hiking. So that is considered commercial. Industrial is improved and vacant property used for the purpose of manufacturing. Cell towers are included in that generation of power. And then personal property, treated as a class, even though it's not real estate, taxable personal property of individual association, trust, partnerships, LLPs, and certain corporations. This is the business personal property, the machinery, tools, equipment, furniture, inventory, unregistered vehicles, et cetera. We do not have an open space class in Whitman. There are virtually none from Pittsfield to Provincetown. It is a private ownership where you provide, you get a discount for providing access to the public. So here we are on our values, which were certified last week by Department of Revenue. We have a total of 500, 5,000, excuse me, 5,348 parcels and the value of the town. And the breakout for the residential, you can see it's 89.63% of the values are in the residential class. Commercial, 4.6%, industrial, 1.1%. Commercial, 4.6%, industrial, 1.17%, and personal property, 4.6%. So the combined, what we called CIP, which is what helps calculate a shift, is the commercial, industrial, and personal property, and that combined percentage is 10.37%. Plymouth County municipalities, most of the municipalities that split, meaning a shift from the residential to the commercial, have a minimum of 15% to 25% combined CIP. Those communities include Middleborough, Carver, and two others that I can't remember the names of right now. So, I did this just to show where our values are in relation to last year. So basically, the same. So you voted a residential factor of one. Just wanted you to see that it's pretty much identical makeup. To determine the assessed values, all the members of the Boards of Assessors and Principal Assessor are required to be certified by the Department of Revenue to determine taxable real property at full and fair cash value. Department of Revenue annually approves and adjusts the values proposed by the valuation vendor, Catalyst Tax and Kama Inc. to the assessors. The valuation analysis data is based on residential assessed value compared to the fair market sales value. We're looking at majority 2023 sales analysis for fiscal '25. The commercial assessed value is based on both the income and expense, as well as the comparable market analysis and cost analysis. All those analyses are done by our vendor Catalyst Tax and Kama. So now we have how you calculate the tax rate. So we have the estimated levy, and then we have the property, total property values. You divide the levy by the values times 1,000 to get the proposed tax rate. So right now, it's an estimated rate of 13.12. You can see, I've just broken it down, what the share is, if it was a single rate. So that rate would stay with each share, but it changes if you do a split. This is just a 10-year lookback on the average single-family assessed value. So you can see the average single-family value for fiscal '25 is 495,737. We did include this year the historical tax rates, just in case that's helpful for you to see. But that is the 10-year lookback. This year, we decided to break down the averages for not only the single-family homes, but also the condos and the two-family and the three-families. There were strong sales, majority of the sales for 2023 was condos. And we have many, many multifamily dwellings. So you can see that largest increase based on sales price, the two families. Next is the three families, and then pretty even, pretty close, is the single-family and condos. All right. So now we get to the shift. So the shift is shifting a percentage of the levy based on... On the left side is the shift percentage. So if we were to shift 1.05%, you would adopt a residential factor of 0.99. And then you would see the percentage, or rather, the tax rate that it would be for the residential, the commercial, industrial, and personal property. So it'd be the same percentage, the same tax rate for those three, at a lower tax rate for the residential. So here it is, a little bit close up. So we've got the residential average single-family value, 495,737. At the single tax rate, average bill, $6,504.07. If you were to adopt the lower residential factor, the 0.99 on the screen before, you would have the 1.05. And so that would reduce the residential bill by $36.66. So that same residential factor with the shift of 1.05 for the commercial, industrial, and personal property, would... The tax rate would be $13.77. And then the increase to the... Sorry, the commercial, industrial, personal property would be 413.06. The pros for a single tax rate, it lessens the impact on the businesses, because if you were to shift, they pick up the additional tax. It attracts more businesses to Whitman. We offer many small exemptions on real estate taxes for seniors, veterans, and low-income. We try to be very aggressive about updating those and putting those before town meeting to increase those limits so we can get as many people in. I think we had about 163 exemptions that were processed last year, and most of those, we get money back from the state. The cons for splitting the rate to the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax is not as many communities split their rate. The ones that do have a residential, 70%, and CIP combined of 30%. Whitman is essentially 90% residential, CIP is 10%. Split rate also detracts future businesses from relocating to Whitman. Vacancy rates sometimes increase, and there is difficulty in reverting back to a single rate. It does impact some of the escrows and mortgages that people are impacted with. Who is eligible for a... So if you were to do a split rate, small business... We can adopt a small business exemption, which allows the smaller businesses, and there are restrictions with it. Total value, 1 million, 10 or fewer employees. This does not include the businesses out of home. So those would not be included in this. And from the list that we get from Department of Labor and Workforce Development, it's roughly 199 businesses that they account for, and we have approximately 50 more parcels than that. So it would basically take out your whole base for the shift. So it basically, I think, negates itself. Residential exemption, most of the communities that have it are in Boston, Brookline, and some of the places on the Cape, like Nantucket, Tisbury. It's for owner-occupied residences. You can lower the percentage of your value, and this is the lower than the average for the town. And then it shifts the... That percentage shifts to the higher-valued residences. Not something that the Board of Assessors would recommend. Open space discount, I'm not even going to read this because we don't have it. So, the Board of Assessors has voted to recommend a single residential factor of one be adopted for fiscal 2025, and they voted no on small commercial exemption, no on the residential exemption, and that's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Sean.
I was just going to say, I make the motion to support their recommendations.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Thank you. You did a good job.
Okay.
All in favor?
Thanks.
Public hearing, yes, it's on?
Yes.
Public hearing?
Yes.
So the public can speak before you vote?
Sure. If I decide to recognize you. Go ahead. Go ahead, John.
See him back there. I didn't see him back there.
I didn't see your hand go up.
Well, you voted before I could even get my hand up. John Galvin, 41, Hoshie. Thank you very much for your presentation. A couple of things I noticed that I would have liked to see on here is the amount of the excess levy capacity that has been on past ones. Do you have that amount?
Yes.
Do we know what that amount is?
Yep, I do. Yep. So right now, for this fiscal year, it's $13,833.25.
Wonderful. I think that's very good. That's a hot topic in this town in past years, so I think that's very good. Secondly, on page nine, in the past, I don't know if you can scroll to page nine, but that's the average single-family house assessed value. In the past, you've also had what the tax, what the tax amount is for the person in that average family home. You've had it listed, so it's easier to compare the impact of what's happening. So, to me, that's something that's specifically very important, because as we move forward in these next couple of years, we are going to see a severe increase in what the average family is paying. That owner right now of that $495,000 house is paying $514 more a year this year, or 8.6% more. And most of that is because of the debt exclusions that we all voted at the town. And so we know there's not a whole lot we can do for that, but maybe there is. I do think it's time that this board starts thinking about the residential exemption. Our seniors and our low-income people, residents, are going to get hit hard. Not necessarily this year. They'll feel it. It's $500 is a lot. But that 8.6% is only a third of what we figured the impact of the DPW and the Whitman Middle School would be. Back then, when we voted these, we figured that the tax impact may be as much as 28% added on for those two capital projects. I think it's going to come down a little bit because the interest rates are a little better now, but unfortunately, the school district is not seeing that because they don't even have a bond rating right now. So I think it's important that we need to consider, if not this year, we need to strongly consider next year that residential exemption and take some of the burden off of the lower-income people. You know, and we're not even talking about South Shore Tech, and South Shore Tech's coming up. And I think it's important that this group, this select board, shows some leadership in helping those lower-income people, and I think that's the way you can do it, you know? I haven't heard anything from this board other than Mr. Salvucci, because he's on the South Shore Tech School Committee, on what we're going to do with South Shore Tech. Is that something that this board has talked about and has decided? And I'll stop at that. But I do think you need to consider the residential exemption for those people that need it, and also as much as we can do for seniors and whatever the Board of Assessors can do. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anyone have any...
Yeah, I have a comment against that. Even though, if we were to do that, right, and lower... I mean, I'd like to see the taxes. I'm a homeowner. I'd like to see my taxes go down or not up that amount. But I also deal with businesses in Whitman, restaurants and things like that, and I'm just in fear that if we did something like that, you're going to have businesses increase the costs, right, to contain what they're doing. Plus, if you're renting, the rent may go up. You know, it may come back that the average taxpayer pays and makes up the difference by in the cost of doing business with that company.
So I'm not discussing about doing a split tax rate.
Yeah.
So passing... What I'm talking about is the residential exemption, which will take the lower-valued homes and lower the tax impact of that household and add it to the higher-priced homes, which one would think would be somebody that has more ability to help cover that. Okay? So we have to do something to help the low-income people.
I see what you're...
You know, the seniors that are on fixed incomes. Most of them have probably scaled down, so they have a lower house. You know, I'm a senior. My house is the same one I raised my four kids in, so, you know, mine's higher value, but I couldn't afford it. Other people cannot. So I think it's really something we need to consider. The other thing we need to consider is really buckling down where we can. I mean, in our, in our, in our own budget, in our town budget, you know, there's, we can't think of expanding services. We need to really keep everything as tight as we possibly can. I know we're negotiating with four different unions right now. The district is negotiating with their unions right now. We need to keep that into consideration, that, you know, we need to get, we need to be as tight as we possibly can, because that's something we can control. The building costs, that's, that's a green light. Whatever those costs, that's going to pass on to the taxpayer, and that's what we need to try to battle against.
Okay. I got a comment on that. How... I'm in the same situation. I'm, right, I own my home. The value of my house goes up, and of course, you pay more. If we return and switch it that, for people that will say own a house for 700, that's valued at $700,000 or $800,000, to increase their costs, to offset the cost of how somebody's house that's $400,000, $450,000, is that... You're saying if they own a house for $700,000, we'll say, they can afford it. But in actuality, maybe they bought a house that's overvalued it when they, when they first got it. I mean, I bought my house '77, it was $36,000. Now my house is valued at $450,000. So, I mean, it's kind of a tough thing to do, even though you're saying somebody that owns a house that's pretty expensive, they can afford it. In actuality, can they?
So let me just put it this way. So let's use fiscal '24 as ground zero, because there wasn't really a whole lot of the debt exclusion amount in last year's. Now we've got, we're starting to see it. We've got about a little under $3 million worth of debt-excluded amounts added on top. There's no, the taxpayer can't say anything about that. It's already been voted. Next year, it's going to be significantly more than that. We're not even bonding, really, the middle school yet. We've only got $400,000 in there. That's going to be millions and millions of dollars when that comes up. That's just going to get added on. Add in South Shore Tech, you're looking at increasing by, say, fiscal '29. You're looking at increasing the tax rate from fiscal '24 to fiscal '29, what taxpayers are paying by almost, by over 35%, just by those building costs, you know? And South Shore Tech, when that goes through, and I think it will, that's going to be the second-largest building project in Whitman's history, and the building's not even in Whitman. Okay? So, in fiscal '29, our taxes from fiscal '24 to fiscal '29 will have gone up approximately 35%. How in the world is a low-income person and a senior going to afford that? They're not. I have several in my neighborhood that are significantly older than me, that have been there longer. They may have been there 30 years. They're all coming up to me. What am I going to do? I can't afford it. We have to figure out something.
And what do you say to the people that you're going to tack the extra money to? That's the only thing. What do you say to them?
I mean, do you want to help out the lower-income people in your town? I'm one of those people. I'm more than willing to pay more on my house, even though it's just me and my wife, and it's a five-bedroom house. I'm willing to do that because I can afford it. Okay? And I'm speaking for people who, who, you know, my house is evaluated more than the average. Those people who are $700,000 homes or $800,000 homes, and there's not a lot of them, but anyway.
Sean, good stuff to think about, but the motion's on the table right now.
Well, the discussion is still to happen. The vote, the vote hasn't happened yet.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
Excellent. Yes.
Wendy, what, do you have a reason that your board decided to not include that? What was the reason that...
The residential exemption?
Yes.
Well, we, we offer a lot of exemptions, including a tax deferral with interest. And there is, it's not quite, in my opinion, finalized yet, but there's a senior means test that you have to go to the, through the legislature process, and that will be using the, the income tax circuit breaker tax credit information. income tax circuit breaker tax credit information. And, and actually, those amounts are higher than, than our residential exemptions. So, that is something to keep an eye on.
And that would benefit the lower income?
Yes.
And if we did the other, would they be, would they qualify for the other, or would it be just what we're doing, and then they wouldn't qualify for the higher?
We're doing, yeah.
Yeah, so that might be a disadvantage to our lower income, or myself, I should say.
Okay, thank you.
And I just, sorry, just wanna credit the assessors with, last year, they brought a couple of, they opened the book and brought every exemption they could find to town meeting. And we changed a couple of things. Last year, we added a Veterans Work Off program. I think that was great, sort of looking toward the future for the tax increases. I would ask them to take another look at the residential exemption, just to run some numbers, because I imagine John will be back here next year asking the same thing. And it would be good to know what the potential impacts of that shift would look like. But I think-
Yeah, we can leave you.
Yeah.
You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have we moved, we've moved it, and we've seconded it, right? But we haven't really voted yet. We ready to vote?
Just on the fact of, yeah.
Yeah. All of us in favor of the assessors' recommendations for this year?
For this year.
Hi.
They're looking to it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
After one, yeah.
Okay, well, we've gone a little past seven fifteen. But the next thing on the agenda is a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, and the Town of Whitman General Bylaws, Article twenty-seven, with respect to a complaint filed by Samantha and Chris Fielkowski of one-eleven Captain Allen Way against a dog allegedly owned or harbored by Teresa Collantoni of eighty-eight Little Comfort Circle. Okay, so, those of you who are not interested in this, in this hearing can take the time to leave. Those of you who are here for the hearing, I'd like you to, what I'd like you to do is to sign in. There's a sheet for sign in.
Come.
General, just for the people who are speaking of residents.
And Officer Silva, who was there with me. That made me feel really good to see him come. He's a logical, he's, he's in the field. He-
He's reading everything you submitted.
Yes. His master's class. Football class. I'm very impressed with his knowledge.
Okay. Now that we have, we have the people who are gonna speak signed in, we need to swear you in. So, those of you who are going to speak, if you could please stand up and raise your right hand and state after me, "I swear that the testimony I am about to give-"
Swear testimony I am about to give.
"-is the whole truth and nothing but the truth."
It's the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to acknowledge the following record documents that have previously been provided in this matter. There's a complaint from Chris and Samantha Fielkowski. Is that the way to pronounce it? Fielkowski? If I couldn't pronounce it, I'd real feel, would feel really crummy about that. Dated October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, and a certified notification of hearing to Teresa Collantoni dated November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. Is Teresa here?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Is that Collantoni?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Certified notification of hearing to Chris and Samantha Fielkowski dated November twelfth. That's, we have that. And that'll do. It's time now to hear Teresa's testimony. Give you each a chance to speak. Try to keep it to five minutes or so. If things get out of hand, if people are ornery when they're speaking, or using foul language because they get upset, or whatever, we're gonna have to not tolerate that. Just let you know, we have a, we like, we like calm and peaceful meetings, even though they might be on a, on a sensitive, a sensitive topic. The first person to speak will be Animal Control Officer Joe Kenny. And then, after that, we will have the complainants, Chris and Samantha Fielkowski, and any speakers in support of the Fielkowskis' position after that, and then Teresa Collantoni, the owner of the dog, any speakers in support of Mrs. Collantoni, and then we'll go from there. So, Joe?
Hey.
Let us know what's going on here.
So, we received a call. I wasn't at the call. I wasn't on scene for the call. But I was just received a call. It was a dog-on-dog fight.
Excuse me, I forgot one thing. Laura, who is our Animal Control Officer, who is also a selectman, is gonna be a lot more comfortable if she's sitting over there.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Laura.
No worries.
So, we were called out for a dog-on-dog fight. And it sounds like there was some previous incidences that weren't reported to us, that it happened or occurred. But like I said, they hadn't been reported to us. So, we're taking as the first actual report. It was a dog-on-dog. The dog got out of the yard, and we've gotten in a fight with a dog that was walking. And that's about where we were at with it. The dog, I think, was quarantined through the town. And it was, like we said, we treated it like a first occurrence.
Okay. So, there was, so, according to Mass General Law, one of the things that's defined as an attack, and that's an aggressive physical contact initiated by an animal. That's how you would describe, was that kind of-
I'd describe anything that was bite-related as an attack. So-
Okay.
It was a dog-on-dog thing, and the dogs attacked. The dog got out of the yard and came out and got a dog that was walking by, is how I was told.
Okay. Joe, what I'm gonna do, basically, what our job as a, as a board hearing is right now, is to decide whether or not an attack actually happened, and also to decide whether or not it's an attack that leads to the, the label of a dangerous dog, or a nuisance dog, or nothing.
Right, yeah. So, typically, in these, it's like a three-part thing. So, it's decide if it's nuisance, if it's a dangerous dog, and then if you decide whether or not it is a nuisance or dangerous-
Right.
-then you can pick-
Right.
-supplemental rules and regulations for the dog that could rectify or make people feel more comfortable.
I just, I'd just like to read what the definition of the larva is of a dangerous dog. It's a dog that either, one, without justification attacks a person or a domestic animal, causing physical injury or death. Two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe possesses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. That's a dangerous dog. A nuisance dog is a dog that by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance to a sick person resident residing in the vicinity. By executive, excessive barking, causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive, disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment. Or three, has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal, or a person, but such threat or attack was not a grossly disproportionate reaction under all circumstances. So, nuisance, dangerous, and that's what an attack is. I'd like to hear, next, we'll, we'll hear from the complainants, and then from, from the dog owner. And there's a, is there Mr. Packard here? Are you, are you speaking for whom?
I'm speaking, I'm the dog owner.
The dog owner. Oh, okay, okay. And so, actually, you guys signed up in order that you're gonna be speaking in, pretty much. We'll have the Fielkowskis come up and speak, tell us what happened. And Joe, you did your job. Maybe, you might be able to help us after we hear-
Yeah.
-the, hear the descriptions, whether or not you believe that it's a attack, a nuisance dog, or, or whatever, or a dangerous dog.
Put a name on that.
So, you, we'll hear from you again.
Sounds good to me.
And the first thing we'll do is we'll hear from the complainants, and then we'll hear from Teresa Collantoni and David. Is it David?
Yes, sir.
David Packard. Okay, so, if, if Chris and Samantha? Perfect.
All right. Hello. So, I'd like to start off by reading the statement I submitted.
Sure.
And then, after that, I do have some other pieces of documents that I brought with me. So, this letter is regarding the incident that occurred on October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, with our dog Charlie Fielkowski and our neighbor's dog at eighty-eight Little Comfort Circle in Whitman, while on a walk throughout our neighborhood. We are formally requesting a dog incident hearing within the Town of Whitman due to the result of this incident being our dog being bit by our neighbor's dog. On the morning of October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, we took our leashed dog for a walk around the neighborhood. Upon approaching our neighbor's house at eighty-eight Little Comfort Circle, on the opposite side of the street, on the sidewalk, the other dog came charging towards us from the left side of the house, unleashed and left the property completely. The other dog proceeded to attempt to attack our dog, and while we tried our best, the other dog, to keep the other dog away from us, and additionally, even picked up our dog to protect him, the other dog continued to aggressively advance and resulted in biting our dog twice. It took a significant amount of time for a friend of the home dog owner to come out and take responsibility for the dog. The incident in detail was explained to Officer Silva of Whitman Police and Laura Howe of Animal Control for Whitman that morning at her home at one-eleven Captain Allen Way, after arriving back at her home, checking on our dog thoroughly, calling our vet to get him seen that day to ensure his health and safety, and reporting it to the Town of Whitman. Based on this incident and another incident that occurred approximately one month, one month prior, that was not reported due to not being as severe or resulting in any injury to ourselves or our dog, as well as speaking with the owner directly and coming to a mutual understanding that the dog would either remain in their fenced-in yard or on a leash if outside the fenced-in yard, we strongly feel that at this time, this needs to be brought to the attention of the town for additional measures to ensure the safety of our dog, our family, and our neighborhood. So, with that said, my husband and I do believe that this dog is not a nuisance. It's dangerous. I was transparent with the second incident, even though it wasn't reported, because we are a close neighborhood, and we tried to give our neighbor the benefit of the doubt. And that same day that the first incident occurred, my husband and I physically walked over and spoke to our neighbors and had a firm conversation. And we were all under the, the same understanding that it wouldn't happen again. And unfortunately, it did happen again, and this time, our dog was bit twice. Naturally, all I thought was to pick up my dog to protect him, and the dog continued to advance up my leg. My husband and I were very scared that day. We're still scared. We walked, we haven't walked by that house with our dog since. I did submit it ahead of time. I'm not sure if it's on file, but we did the dog complaint form, and we did constitute this as a dangerous dog with both options checked, as well as we took our dog to the vet that day. And the veterinarian confirmed that he was bit twice and prescribed him a anti-inflammatory medication for the bruising. You want to say anything?
Yeah, it, it, it was one of those things where, you know, the dog charged off the yard, and it advanced rapidly. And, you know, she picked up the dog, and I was trying to fend him away. But at the same time, the dog's so aggressive that, you know, you don't wanna, like, stick your hands in there. So, I can only imagine, you know, if she was by herself, or if, you know, we have two small children, a one-year-old and a three-year-old, if we were walking with them and our dog, you know, our instinct would be to pick up our kid. And then, that would leave the dog, you know, to fend for himself. And, you know, that, that's not okay to walk around your neighborhood and, and to feel that insecurity of, we can't go that way with our dog because of that reason. So.
Thank you. Do we have copies of these, of that statement? I couldn't, I couldn't find them.
If not, I'm happy to provide them again.
As long, as long as we have them.
As well as, we do have both incidents, even though the one, the first one was not technically reported with the town. Both incidents, numerous neighbors came outside. Neighbors also gave statements to the police that day, as well as neighbors provided statements in writing to the town before tonight. I think a lot of people in the neighborhood are quite frightened at this point for other dogs and children. It just seems to be both occurrences, the first time the fence was open, and the second time, the dog came outside of the fence out of nowhere. So, the dog keeps getting out. It's not being watched. I'm not sure. But both times, the dog is not being, you know, held responsible for.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Teresa, Teresa and David, you want to, do you wanna come up together? And then Officer Silva is gonna have something to say also. You, you signed the thing. Are you, are you here to speak?
I didn't speak.
You speak, okay.
Good evening.
Hi. I did hear about the first incident that happened. They did come to my home. I did speak with them. The gate was unfortunately left open. Dutch got outside. We did, were keeping him in the yard. He's on a leash. I did have work done in my yard over the summertime in walking around my perimeter, as several of my neighbors suggested, to see where my dog was getting out. We did find an area where the fence wasn't attached back to the post, and he went under the fence on the second day that he went after the dog.
This is for the second attack?
Yes.
It was the first attack.
It was the first.
First attack. So, the gate, the gate, the gate was shut, but he got out?
He got out through the fence, which we found, and the fence has been fixed.
Okay. So, why did this, how did the second, how did the second attack happen then if the, if the fence was fixed?
The first attack happened, the fence gate was left open.
Okay.
And the second attack, he, he was in the yard and got out-
Okay.
-under the fence. You know, I've had the dog there. I've been there eleven years. I've never, ever, he's never attacked anybody. The kids play in our drainage next door to me. They always come up to the fence. They pat the dog. I've never had a problem. He's never bit anybody. I've never had a problem, he's never bit anybody, ever. And speaking with, um, the police officer and, um, I'm sorry, I'm like branded. Laura. For some reason, Dutchy's being walked a lot more now, and he has the scent of this dog. And for some reason, he, I, he just doesn't like this dog, I don't know why. The dog's never done anything to him, I, I mean, I just, I don't know. But, you know, as for them saying that the dog's not being watched, I do work during the day. I have to, because I'm one of those people with the housing thing. So, I mean, the dogs, he goes in and out all day, he does, David's home during the day. But we're trying to rectify.
You say he goes in and out?
We have a do, I have a dog door.
With a fenced-in yard?
With a fenced-in yard, I have a dog door.
Yeah, okay.
So he, he's able to go in and out of the house all day.
Out of the house? But he shouldn't be going in and out of the yard?
No, no, he goes in and out of the house.
All right. He made his own doggy door?
Yeah, he has a dog door. You know, I apologize, I understand the scariness, because Dutch is a big dog. He's 65 pounds of muscle, and...
How big is the other dog? Pardon? 28 pounds, what kind of dog? Labradoodle?
So I, I absolutely understand. I mean, he's come charging at me to play, and he's knocked me down. He's a big dog, you know, he doesn't understand his muscle.
What kind of dog is he?
He's a terrier mix. He's a pit bull. He's a terrier mix. He has a very good temperament. He's not a mean dog in any way. This is the first time he's ever bit.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, uh, the first incident, sir, I had just walked out of the gate. I had noticed our neighbor walking by with the dog. I spoke to her. I did not fully lock the gate. I shut the latch, I didn't lock it, he came out right behind me. I was immediately on him, yes, the dog did charge her, but he was not being unwatched. It, I was right there, it was an accident. We, we were aware of the situation. The second incident, I, and I brought a photo, because we walked around the yard, there were two witnesses that saw the dog come from the left side of the yard. We had no idea this fence wasn't attached to the post. We had a lot of work done in the yard this summer. The dog was able to push through the fence, lift the whole fence right up, and he did come from the left side of the yard. That's not in question. We subsequently fixed the problem, found the problem, identified it, and then fixed the problem. I walk the dog twice a day. I don't think the dog's a dangerous dog. We have had two incidents. I would put forth a proposal where I want our neighbors to feel safe. I don't want any discourse in the neighborhood. If you gave me a two-hour window to walk the dog in the morning and the afternoon, I'll adhere to that. They can walk the dog the rest of the day and night.
Well, if you're walking the dog, though, the dog's on a leash.
He's always on a leash.
Yeah.
Always on a leash. Um, that would be, just be a proposal, I might add, to help the neighborhood. We don't have any other issue with our neighbor. I walk the dog, by children, other dogs, for some reason, we do have an issue with this dog.
So, just so I can get this straight, second attack, the dog went out, threw a hole in the fence that you didn't know existed?
Not a hole.
Not a hole.
Okay, I, an opening, an opening.
Yes.
You didn't know it existed.
So when I had the yard, when I had my yard done?
And that was the second attack?
They moved the fence, and when they put the fence back, they didn't attach it.
I got it fixed.
Yes, sir.
And the, um, there hasn't been a, any other attacks?
No, sir.
Thank you. Sean?
Knowing your dog and understanding the situation, do you think the dog would have hurt the other dog if it really could have?
I think that Dutchy wanted to play with the dog. I'm not gonna lie, he's not socialized. He is with children, but with other pets. He's never been socialized.
The dog doesn't have a mean bone in his body. I honestly do not believe the dog intended to hurt him. He wanted to play. He's fast and he just goes up to people, my parents. No, sir, I do not think the dog intended to hurt another dog or a person.
Because if that was the case, I wouldn't have kept him. I've had him for 11 years. I would have never kept him.
Great, thank you. Laura keeps pointing her finger at me.
I just feel, I have one little thing to say, and I really respect, if Officer Silva could speak, uh, since he was there with me, to witness the dog. I just feel, with zero disrespect to the entire neighborhood, that you're not getting, when you paint a picture of a dog and you say what breed, or this, that, it's very difficult. I, and I believe Officer Silva, and if I'm speaking wrong, he can certainly correct me, I wouldn't even have called this dog a pit bull, and I wouldn't even have said this dog was 65 pounds. This is an older dog, and dogs have behaviors, and I wished I could educate everyone in three seconds on dog behaviors. But what this dog did was actually normal behavior for a dog that got loose, and it is scary, 100% scary, and it can be dangerous. But it also is within the realm of normal behavior. And when we're saying and labeling a dog, I just feel bad when it's labeled with pit bull, because it does give a prejudice, um, to the animal. But anything else, I feel that Officer Silva can answer?
That was the owner that just used the term?
Yes, and I do realize, but I would have actually not, you, I believe she's more of a, um, my mother actually used to have the same dog. It's like one of those terriers that, um, are smaller. This is not a big pit bull, like we were dealing with on High Street. This is not that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Officer Silva? Do you, you have anything to add to that?
I can only expound, just to say that the, the testimony given by the Felkowskis that they read to you was accurate to what they told me that day. You know, when I did, um, speak with the dog owner, the dog did, uh, to me, it was, um, it was gentle, and I did not see any aggression, but the testimony given by the Felkowskis today is accurate to what they gave me that day.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
Just the marks on the dog that was bit, it felt, seemed like playing-type marks, or like a bite that was a bite to like injure? You know, for me, I feel like it's important to kind of determine whether the dog was biting to bite, or kind of like biting to play, you know?
I would have to defer to the, to the Felkowskis. I did not actually see the dog, they just told me what happened, they did, so, um, I don't want to speak for them.
Sure.
But I believe there was no punctures, but they would have to give specifics on what the, uh, the vet gave for a recommendation on the dog's behalf.
I'm happy, I'm happy to. Do you want me to come up or?
Sure. Well, if that's okay.
Sorry, I didn't, I apologize, I didn't write my name on the paper. I actually live across the street from Teresa, that incident's happened in front of my home. My husband gave a statement for Laura. So I don't know if I'm allowed to?
Oh, sure, you, you can add, and then, and then I want to go to Joe.
Everything is the same.
I thought she stood up and got sworn in. Did you, did you get sworn in?
No, I'm sorry.
You have to get sworn in. Okay. Raise your right hand, please.
Yeah.
And, oh shoot, I don't have that. Is it, is it?
I've never been to a hearing, so I thought that, I just...
It's all good.
Our statement would be on file.
Is there anyone else who wants to, to make a statement? Okay, Joe, I'll let him back here. Yes. Raise your right hand and state, I swear that the testimony I am about to give.
I swear that the testimony I'm about to give.
Is the whole truth?
Is the whole truth. And nothing but the truth. Nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth, great.
Okay, thanks.
Did she sign it?
I thought you wanted me to respond, yeah. That's why I came up.
Yeah, that's good, you, you sit down, too.
Okay.
Did she sign it?
Yes, so in terms of...
Did she sign it? Oh, he didn't sign.
So in regard to what Officer Silva said regarding the, the bite marks, um, by no means was this a friendly approach? I just want to make that clear, we were on the other side of the street with our leashed dog, and this dog aggressively charged us and left their property and crossed the street, and came at Charlie directly, and I naturally tried to pick him up to protect him, and he continued to advance with teeth and tried to bite him, and then he did bite him twice. This was not a friendly encounter, this was not a playful encounter. He charged a dog and two humans for no reason. There was nothing to cause that. And I note of that, the, um, we took him to the vet, and she confirmed that it was two, um, bite mark, bite marks bruising on the back of his legs. As I picked him up, he kept trying to advance us and crawled up my leg, and as my husband tried to continue to get the dog off of us, he kept advancing myself and the dog. So I don't see how you could say that was a friendly or a playful encounter. We were on our own for probably about 60 to 90 seconds before anybody took responsibility for the dog. My husband and I were fending for ourselves. And then neighbors came out, um, one of them being Karissa Curtis, and from there, we took our dog home. So I just wanted to make that clear, that he was bit twice, it was not friendly.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Hi, all right. So, uh, I will first start off, is obviously I've been neighbors with most of the individuals for several years, and I think everybody has done the best they can to respect each other. I mean, we are a very close knit neighborhood, so I know that this is a very sensitive topic. I know we're only here for one incident, but I obviously live across the street from Teresa, so I, the two incidences, um, have happened in front of my yard. I have witnessed them. They, I would agree that they were not playful in any way. To be honest with you, I am certainly scared, I have a five-year-old, so I have been very, very high alert. My husband, um, you know, spent two hours that day making sure, like, he had a statement on record. We have seen some behavior now, like repetitive behavior, that is concerning. At the same time, I've lived across the street from Teresa for eight and a half years. I have never had a problem with Dutch up until recently. So it's hard, because I, um, am scared, because I have a young daughter that plays outside in the front yard, and I have been concerned about having her out there after witnessing the attacks that I've seen. At the same time, prior to this, we have never seen anything. I don't know if there's been a change in behavior. I will say that I have with my own eyes seen that gate open, left unattended. I have seen Dutch walked on a leash, but the leash has been dragging. So I have witnessed things that I haven't seen in the past, so it does seem like there has been some change in, um, you know, the responsibility of the dog. I don't know for sure that you can say that it's just that a Dutch no, doesn't like Charlie, which is the other dog's name. I would be remiss if I didn't speak up, just because we have a lot of young kids that play in that area. I have witnessed two incidences that has scared me personally. But besides that, like, there hasn't been incidences leading up to that. So I don't know how you make the call of what is dangerous. To me, it feels dangerous, and I would feel like if I didn't say anything and something more severe happened with one of the kids in the neighborhood, um, that would be devastating. So, um, I know Sam and Chris had talked to Teresa, and they had come to some type of an agreement after the first incident. I was very shocked that a second incident more severe happened within a, for, like, probably four weeks. I mean, I, this was in front of my home, I heard it, I saw it, I saw the aftermath. Yes, I would agree with the statement that Sam said, there wasn't a dog owner present to grab Dutch, it did take a while. And so I feel like I just needed to say that, because I have witnessed them both. My husband did leave a, a statement with Laura, so I just wanted to speak on, on that, because I thought it would be, um, part of the, I guess, I don't know.
It'll be part of the...
So, um, but yeah, I mean, we obviously have taken time out of our schedules to make sure that we have, I mean, I think I was the first one that called Animal Control that day, because it's just, I would feel uncomfortable if I didn't report anything at this point, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, does it, does it make a difference now that the, the dog apparently doesn't have a way to get out unless the gate is left open?
Yeah, like I...
Do you feel as if, they've made some changes, apparently, they fixed the fence? Do you feel, do you, do you feel personally that that takes care of the situation?
Um, I mean, it, does it make me feel better completely? No, if I'm being, if I'm being honest. And here's the thing, again, I've lived across the street from Teresa, I have never had any issues or concerns with Dutch up until recently. I have seen Dutch, I have seen that gate open a lot more recently in probably the last six months than I have in the entirety of the eight years that I've lived there. So again, I have seen Dutch walked, even though he was on leash, he, no one was holding the leash. So it does seem like the response, I, I don't know if there was, you know, again, we're all, you know, we all feel, I think, certainly that our dog is not gonna hurt anybody, so maybe you get a little lax with, you know, being responsible, I'm not sure. But it does seem like there has been changes in that perspective, so having no way to get out, um, I mean, sure, but there's, I think, other ways that he could probably get out. To be honest, I bet he could jump that fence if he wanted to, I've never seen him do that. But it doesn't necessarily change the fact that, like, I wouldn't, I'm still not scared. My daughter is like, not allowed, if she sees the dog out on her own, she has to come inside, like, I mean, this is what we're doing in the neighborhood now, so, I, that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
May I have your bundle?
Pardon?
May I be heard?
Uh, sure. But he's gonna, he has a question. Well, I was gonna ask him to come forward anyway. Oh, you were? It's in my question, yeah. Oh, all right. Okay, thank, thank you very much. Chris?
Yeah, Karissa, sir.
We have a separate doggy, we have a separate door inside the home that we closed, that the dog is not allowed to go out. So if the gate's ever been seen open, that's when we're moving something in and out of the yard. We have the ability to close the doggy door with a separate door. So if that gate was seen open, we've shut the door on the inside.
I hear you.
As far as the vet bill, we paid the vet bill, I paid the vet bill. It was $95. If we've ever gone to a vet, vets are very expensive. This was not a, there was no blood drawn, it was not a vicious attack. But we have the ability to close the door from the inside when the gate is open, when we move things in the yard.
Okay, so the, the gates being open isn't necessarily a, uh, a problem. It, we trust you, that you're doing the...
Yes, I was just addressing the gate being left open. We, again, we have the ability to shut the door on the inside.
And you always do, whenever the gate's open?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions I have for you is, when the dog is on a, you said, the dog is on a leash, that's a leash that's attached to a line?
A harness. He has a body harness. And a leash is attached to the, the harness. It's not a collar leash.
Right, but what I'm saying is, it's attached to something, it's not, not being walked by a human, it's being attached to a line or something, back and forth in the yard?
No, no, sir. In the backyard, the, the yard's fenced in four feet high, the dog has the ability to roam in the backyard. The backyard is completely fenced in.
When he's on the harness or leash, there's always an adult with him?
Yes, sir. Always.
Okay, um, I, I personally feel that, uh, our swell Animal Control Officers should walk your yard to make sure that that yard is, um, secure enough to maintain the dog. It's only, it's only a four-foot fence, you're saying? High?
I, I believe so, sir.
Yeah, because we've had dogs at our dog, our dog pound, that dug underneath the fence, remember? And we ended up, DPW ended up putting 2x6 or whatever.
Yes.
I mean, it may get into that if it can't get out.
Well, he's not a digger, and we did, after this incident, we walked the perimeter of the yard to find out how we got out, because I knew the gates were locked, and there was one fence post that had no vertical ties to it. And the only thing we can think of is we had a bulldozer, a backhoe in the backyard this summer. There were no vertical supports to the post, so we just figured something, they took it off. We replaced them with wire ties, fixed the fence, and I brought pictures to show you that, what we had found. And, like I said, there were two witnesses that saw the dog come, Samantha herself saw the dog come from the left side of the yard, that's where the fence post was.
I'd feel more comfortable if somebody, swell Animal Control, walked the yard to say, yes, it is secure, and no, you need to do this, this, and this.
All right, um, we would welcome that.
Also-
I agree. I would, I or Joe could both do that. But I would also recommend, and in addition, that the doggy door not be available to the dog when either person, if there needs, but nobody's home.
Yeah. I, that's a good, I would agree to that, too. So I personally feel that until the Smiles Control, until Laura and Joe say, okay, everything, they're comfortable saying that this dog is secured and the residents are safe, that the dog stays in the house and not allowed out, unless on a leash by an adult. That way, if there's a way that the dog is getting out other than, I mean, animals are amazing. They can find their way, right?
Yes, sir.
And I'm certainly sure Joe and Laura's eyes looking at a fence or areas, their expertise can say, no, the dog eventually is going to get through that spot or through that spot, and it has to be repaired. I don't know if we're suggesting that, that the, I'm gonna ask you, Laura, should the dog be muzzled until this is completed?
I, I personally don't find the dog aggressive. I find it triggered by other animals, which is quite normal. If you had a digger, which I didn't have any indication this dog was, but if it did, or if you wanted extra security, what I do for my own kennel is I stake, you know, about that deep down around the fence, so the dog digs, it can't go anywhere. The size of the fence was questionable because it's the size of my front fence, so it's four feet. So if I had dogs that wanted to jump it, certainly they could. This dog being elderly and being really much shorter than the idea of the dog by verbal communication is given, I don't think it's going to jump the fence. But if that was a concern, I feel this family cares about this dog, had it its whole life. It's a neutered male. I think they would, you know, even increase the size of the fence, but I don't find that the problem. And the gentleman, that the woman that spoke, her husband, that I spoke to that day, and understand that I can't take reports that have happened that I wasn't notified of. That's why I asked everyone to come before hearing because I do trust that everybody is telling the truth. But until this incident, Joe and I didn't, this dog was off our radar. But I definitely think that the kennel, like, what we would normally say, a kennel with a cement bottom and six-foot enclosure, they have a beautiful backyard, it's on a cul-de-sac, and the dog, if it can be contained, would be fine. The other thing you may want to take into consideration is insurance. If they have a liability policy for their dog that would protect the neighborhood and protect them, which is kind of like a, almost like a basic requirement. But in my, my very long time, as, forget about animal control, as my life on this planet and being involved with dog trainers and behavioral specialists since I was a child, I firmly do not believe this dog is a dangerous dog. But what I do feel is absolutely understandable is we have a neighborhood that is fearful because that happens when someone has seen a traumatic event.
Joe, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not crazy. I usually recommend in any of these cases, a six-foot leash and a fence, as well as a muzzle when it's walked off the property.
Okay.
Typically-
Sean, that's a question. Okay, Sean.
Make everyone feel safe.
Okay.
And I think part of the problem is the dog had a certain behavior for a long period of its life, and then it's recently changed. And it definitely is triggered by at least this one dog. So what maybe has worked for it in the past might not work for it now that there is this, you know, this other dog that's triggering it, you know? So I'm not, I'm not overly comfortable with just a full-foot fence in the back that has worked in the past. If the dog really does want to get out, I'd feel more comfortable with like a, really like a kennel in the backyard as opposed to just a dog roaming, but-
The gentleman, if it matters to you, the gentleman, the woman's husband that I spoke to, he indicated he has never seen that dog jump the fence. And this is an elderly dog. These type of breeds don't have very stable hips as they get a little bit older. And it's really not something I would have been concerned about. The only reason I would have not have suggested a muzzle, but yet it's certainly in the realm of suggestion, and I don't have a problem with it, is that it sometimes, it makes more dogs aggressive. Imagine somebody putting a basket on your face. I think him walking his dog at a different time, certainly never dropping the leash because certainly that is not someone walking a dog, is more appropriate. But when you, when you start using things like muzzles, you kind of have to be careful of what behavior. And if you understand a dog's behavior and lifespan, it kind of becomes like comparable to people that get older. And sometimes people change when they get older, and some dogs do. There was a change in this household, a very sad death in the family. And now the father of this dog is gone. And that is certainly something that affects a dog.
Neighbor across the street.
If that helps you.
It does. For me, sorry.
Go ahead.
I guess there's a lot of variables, and it's very difficult for us to just make a decision based on, you know, just sitting here. But it would be terrible if a third incident happened that, you know, somebody got hurt. So taking some extra precautions to just make sure that that's not going to happen seems to make sense to me.
Yeah, that's why I suggested the things that I had. I feel that's all that really needs to be adjusted. And why I asked for the hearing is I felt that the neighborhood needed the security to know that the owners were going to be much more vigilant of keeping the dog on the property. I am not a fan of dog doors, ever. And that's just me knowing.
May I add one more thing? I have changed our behavior on the times that I walk the dog. I walk the dog in the morning when nobody's out, early in the morning, and I walk him later after dinner. So I have changed our behavior when we walk, during the times we walk. When the kids are out in the street playing, I don't walk the dog to help make them feel safer.
And I just wanted to kind of go through the process. So the term dangerous dog, if we deem the dog dangerous, there's a couple of actions we have to take. It's, you know, one or more of the following, and I'll just paraphrase them for brevity, to kind of let the neighbors know that it gets pretty serious. So if we deem the dog dangerous, you know, the first condition is, you know, humanly restrained. The second would be confined in the property. It could be muzzled and on a leash with a tensile strength of at least 300 pounds, not exceeding three feet in length when it's off property. Liability insurance in the amount of not less than $100,000 that the licensing authority, that a vet examines it, that there's no behavior issues. Another, you know, vet examined for medical conditions. And then that the dog be humanly euthanized. So it steps up pretty quickly. I think that's why this board has historically shied away from deeming dogs dangerous. We can impose conditions with nuisance dogs, or we can ask Animal Control to make recommendations and hope to not see you folks again. And so that has historically been where we've leaned. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else that anyone would like to add to this? Then the, then the hearing is over. What will-
Oh, yeah.
Please be very-
Pardon? I thought, I just asked if, is anyone else? Yeah. I didn't see it.
I'm sorry to come back up again. I just, with all due respect, I just, I understand the severity of what you just defined as what could happen, but to be honest, I just, I feel like this is shifting to defending the dog that attacked my dog. And I just, I feel like it's just one of those situations where, why should my husband and I and other people in the neighborhood feel unsafe walking in our own neighborhood? We were across the street with, we followed the leash law. We had our dog leashed, we were walking. The dog left its property aggressively and came at our dog. I just don't think it's, it just seems kind of unright to sit here and feel like the other dog's being defended. I feel like more needs to be done at this point because, quite frankly-
What, what more would you think should be done?
I just feel like some type of more physical, to the extent of what I think a couple of you have referenced, whether it's a larger fence, insurance, a kennel, a muzzle, will-
All the, all the insurance does is helps them pay for something bad that happens.
Then I would, I would suggest more physical measures because-
What would make, what would make you feel safe?
I mean, I just don't know if I fully, right now I don't feel comfortable walking by. I don't know for a fact that the holes are covered. I don't know that for my own peace of mind, my husband's peace of mind, my, my little kids. I just, I, I don't know, but I just feel like more needs to be done, which is why I did the only option that I was told, which was to ask those hearing, to ask assistance from the town because, to be quite frank with you, that, that incident I did report, it scared the absolute crap out of me. The dog was crawling up my leg, trying to advance me and my dog. I have not walked by since my dog. I just feel like more needs to be done leaving here tonight to make me feel more comfortable and my family.
So you don't, you don't believe that the fence was fixed? Because he hasn't been out since the fence was fixed, I don't think, right?
I believe he's saying that it was, the gentleman, but, I mean, I don't know that for a fact.
Okay.
I, I need some kind of reassurance.
Okay, why don't we send the ACO people, Joe and Laura, to the house? Have them check, as Dan suggested, have them check the premises. Make sure that they, make sure the fence is the way it ought to be. It would seem to me, I want you to feel safe.
I don't right now.
Maybe she can do it.
I, I know, but you're not, you're also, you're also, I have no reason not to trust that the fence was fixed. I heard, I heard from somewhere that appears to be honest to me, tell me that the fence was fixed. I don't think the dog has left since the fence was fixed, has it? There hasn't been another incident?
I have, I mean, I can't say for any of the neighbors, but, I mean-
That, okay, would you feel better if the, if the animal control people came and looked at the house? Maybe you could accompany them?
Yes, I'd like to, if that's possible.
Okay, you, you guys could go with them? Will you, would you be okay with that?
Absolutely.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And I-
Get, if it-
I want them to feel safe. I don't want them to be afraid.
Right.
I mean, I'll take out the dog door. I mean, I definitely don't want my neighbors to feel-
Okay, that sounds, it's, why don't, why don't we have the ACO people and you guys and the dog owners get together and see if there, enough adjustments could be made so that you feel better in the future? Okay? I'm not, I'm not sure I'm ready to label the dog a dangerous dog. I, I could call, obviously, it's a nuisance dog. But one way to deal with a nuisance dog is to have what we're suggesting. Some sort, some sort of an adjustment to the environment that makes you feel safe. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah, what Joe recommended, though, is until that, that's straightened out, that if, even if you take the dog out for a walk, that maybe a muzzle, is that what he said, Joe? Usually you muzzle them?
Yeah. Can I speak? So. Done a lot of these hearings, three times. I do a lot of these. But in general, with most of these, I understand it's a hard situation because dog owners love their dog, and you have neighbors that are afraid of the animal. Not to say that I'm a runner. I go out running, and I couldn't tell you how many times I've been, had a dog run up to me. It's part of going out in public. Things happen, people have pets, and unfortunately, they get out. It does happen. But when you have multiple neighbors concerned about it, my thing is typically, I wouldn't say this was a dangerous dog. I don't think the reaction was grossly unproportionate. I would lean more toward you're nuisance and setting some recommendations. Like Laura said, the doggy doors, I am not a particular fan because it means the dog can have access without supervision, which may be why you have that lean time of why somebody noticed it was missing. So I don't like the doggy doors. Typically find that to be an issue. But I think for the neighborhood, I usually recommend the six-foot leash when it's being walked, which you can, the six-foot leash is a pretty standard-sized leash. It's not a three-foot, which is a pain in the neck to walk your dog on. But a six-foot leash is usually sufficient, and it's a normal leash that most people walk their dog on, as well as doing a fence check, check the yard. I don't necessarily agree with the fence needs to be any taller. It's a super pricey thing to put in fencing. You're looking at $10,000-plus to put in a fence. The dog hasn't jumped over a fence, but I do think doing inspection of the fence within 10 days of closing the haring, inspect the fence, as well as when we take some pictures of the fencing, I'm sure they wouldn't be opposed to it, and then we can submit that because that way the neighbors can feel safe, as well as, and the dog owners can still maintain a pretty normal dog ownership. They don't have to change too much. I think putting in extensive fencing is a little bit overkill in this case, especially with a dog that's 10 or 11 years old. But I do think having a leash requirement as well as a least yard perimeter check is definitely helpful.
So does that, does that work for both families? The ACO, the ACO people will meet with you, with both of you together and look at your property. You said that you'd agree to get rid of the doggy door also? Okay.
I don't want my neighbors to be afraid.
Right, right, okay. Okay, so that, the, I think the hearing is over, and we have a kind of a solution, though, at least now. You think, and within a 10-day period, you-
Within 10 days, we should do a-
Within 10 days, this will, this will be done?
Yeah.
I can go out even tomorrow if they're available, if that makes sense.
Well, we'll just say, we're just, why don't we-
I can go tomorrow.
You can go tomorrow?
Yeah.
Joe, you gonna go with her?
Probably not at Thanksgiving, isn't it? Right? No, tomorrow?
Tomorrow's Thanksgiving.
Okay, yeah, no, it should be good. Yeah.